Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, April 25th, meeting for the City Council for the city of Hayden, Idaho. Could I please have a roll call for the council members, please? Abby?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember DePree.
Here.
Councilmember Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember White.
Yes.
I'd like to have you all stand, please, and ask Councilmember Ed DePree to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Members of council, do we have any additions or corrections to the agenda for the evening? Hearing none, we'll move into our consent calendar. Most of you are already aware of this, but our city does business day in, day out, five days a week. Many of the things that our city staff do do not even pass muster with city council. However, there are some things that city staff does that must be approved by the Hayden City Council. It needs to have our approval or our consent, and that is where we come up with the consent calendar on our next item. The items up for consent tonight are: 1A, approval for appointment of Ian Crosby to the Veterans Commission; 1B, approval of fun flicks, outdoor movies, screen renting contracts for movies in the park on June 29th and August 24th, 2023; 1C, approval of Spokane Teachers' Credit Union sponsorship agreement for 2023 Hayden Days; 1D, the approval of PZE 23-0020, Cur Zone Map Amendment Reconsideration Written Decision; 1E, acceptance of Birdhouse Management LLC grant of easement; 1F, approval of the 2023 Contractual Services Agreement with the USTA Pacific Northwest, the United States Tennis Association Pacific Northwest, for youth and adult tennis programs; 1G, the approval of streaming contract with TBD Marketing; 1H, the approval of master services agreement with High Point IT; 1I, the approval to purchase a 2017 water truck from Caddis Equipment Rental, Inc.; 1J, the approval of the agreement for possession with Daniel and Deanne Sur for the Ramsey Road Extension Project; 1K, approval of fixed school year 2023 Second Quarterly Treasurer's Report; and 1L, the approval of bills for payment. Council members, do you have any questions or comments?
Just one, oh, go ahead.
Go ahead.
Just one question, Mayor, on the TBD marketing and media contract. This is for streaming of the Hayden Planning and Zoning Meeting and also for the Hayden Area Regional, the Hayden Urban Renewal Agency. Is that true or not?
Mr. Roder, honestly, I can't tell you exactly who that involves, and our city administrator, Brett Boyer, is absent this evening. Does any of the staff have?
Hura.
It's not.
Not Hura? Okay. So it is strictly for planning and?
Out of the closet.
Yes.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. I know that Hura, we've discussed also having it streamed, and that the consensus seemed to be that whatever is done at P&amp;Z that Hura would agree to, the same firm.
Okay.
So I think this would apply then. So I'd just like to make that point about it.
Sure. Okay. Thank you. Councilmember White?
Yeah, I just wanted to comment on the appointment to Veterans Commission Ian Cosby. I just found out today from Suzie that he's going to be singing our national anthem at the Memorial Day at the beach.
He's a gold replaying ceremony.
Okay. So I just thought that was an interesting fact.
That is interesting.
Yeah.
And Mr. Cosby is also an individual that applied for the mayor's job. I'm really happy to see him involved in city activities. That's great. Any other comments or questions? Hearing none, I would hear a motion for approval of the consent calendar.
So move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, roll call vote, please. Abby?
Council President Roder.
Yes.
Councilmember White.
Yes.
Councilmembers Satterfield.
Yes.
And Councilmember DePree.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you. For part two of our session tonight, we have the visitor and public comment period. If anyone would like to make a comment, I welcome you to do so. If you would, please fill out a form at the back of the room there. For those that are commenting, you are limited to five minutes. At approximately four minutes, I will wave a piece of paper to let you know that you've got approximately another minute left. You can comment on anything except for action items that we have to discuss yet tonight. Our first commenter is Natalie Quiano. And if I didn't get that right, I apologize. Ma'am, if you would, please, could you please go to the podium right over there and give us your name and whether or not you are a citizen of Hayden?
My name is Natalie Quiano. We had an incident on April 7th, and in the evening, we were at a cafe across from the street from a antenna array. The average density of micro watts per square meter goes as high as 50,000. There were several of us who was affected by the radiation. I was sick for four days. My hands, my limbs tingled, my lips were tingling, and there were some others that were severely affected by it as well. And I would like to ask if you could please put a cap on the power, on your update of the ordinance on that to protect people when it gets too high.
Thank you very much for your comment. To clarify things, ma'am?
Yeah.
Excuse me. Could you tell us where that is?
The cafe is a radio, it's 100 Cordelane.
Is it down on Cordelane Lake Drive, then?
Yeah, down that way.
Okay. All right.
Thank you.
Just a second. Mr. DePree?
Well, that was my question, where this?
Well, it's a problem in other cities and county. The ordinance does not have a cap on power.
And what?
And on antenna arrays or cellular towers. And there needs to be, we would like, some of us would like to see a cap on the power of the micro watts per square meter.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you very much for your comment.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Is that, for clarification, ma'am, is that around Michael D.'s Eatery, somewhere in that area?
That would be 100 Lake Apartments.
Old Apartments. Okay. All right. Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Teresa Roth.
Hi, I'm Teresa Roth, and I'm Hayden property owner and grandmother, and I'm going to talk about the future land use and also fundamental problems with the transportation plan. Hayden citizens have been complaining about the projected densities of the future land use map since it was adopted two years ago. But what does the future land use map have to do with Hayden's transportation plan? Well, it seems that in spite of what we're told, the 2040 transportation plan makes no serious provisions for the massive increases in population provided for the future land use map. The 2040 transportation plan is hundreds of pages long, but it still does not provide for any real additional road capacity needed for dealing with doubling or even tripling Hayden's population. The 2040 plan is simply the existing traffic grid with a few more widened arteries, a few more traffic lights, turn lanes, roundabouts, and surveillance cameras. The only new road construction planned in Hayden other than the Hutter Bypass is the long-delayed Ramsey Road Extension. But millions are scheduled to be spent on minor enhancements to existing roads, and millions more are budgeted to provide for a network of, quote, "non-motorized bike paths." But none of these upgrades could possibly be expected to handle two or three times the current traffic. Hayden does not have a serious transportation plan, and one reason there's so much confusion about every new development that comes before the city council is because everyone knows that Hayden's roads cannot handle much more traffic, but no one will admit it. Whenever someone points out the inadequacy of Hayden's transportation plan, we are assured that the city will do more traffic studies. But no traffic studies are needed to tell us what we already know, that Hayden's traffic grid was designed to handle a rural suburban community, and it will never be able to handle the urban densities that Hayden's planners are planning to foist on us. A suburban traffic grid and an urban traffic grid are two completely different things. Hayden is a suburban community, and there is nothing resembling an urban traffic grid anywhere in the city, including right here in the downtown area. And there are serious unresolved, unresolvable problems in our network. The US 95 cuts right through the city, the airport blocks almost all northern access, and the only functioning north-south arterial in all of Hayden east of 95 is the already heavily congested government way. All of these problems are not truly fixable, so Hayden does not have the traffic infrastructure to support high-density development, and it never will. What, then, were the transportation planners up to? Are they incompetent, or is there something we're not looking at? Well, I've taken another look, and perhaps the planners knew exactly what they were doing, and their primary goal was never to provide for efficient automobile travel. This may sound crazy, but perhaps the real purpose of Hayden's 2040 transportation plan is to lay the groundwork for a future public transit system. Why do we say this? The written plan does not explicitly promote public transportation over private automobile travel, but it has a very high priority on non-motorized transport. What does this mean? Also, the Imagine Hayden video on the transportation plan that can be viewed on Hayden website does explicitly explain the plan to prioritize public transit and to discourage private auto. At the 26-minute mark, the ITurus consultant who developed the Hayden transportation plan has this to say, quote, "A non-motorized system needs to be in place before you can implement a really heavy transit system. To get people out of single occupancy vehicles, you need to be able to allow them a safe way to access the system, and this is the best way of doing it." So it seems that the real reason Hayden planners don't take traffic planning seriously is because they believe that by 2040, most Hayden residents will no longer be driving private cars, and in order to lay the groundwork for future transit systems, high-density housing, and bike paths are necessary. In other words, the vision of the city planners for the future of Hayden is the polar opposite of that of the residents, but of course, we knew that. It's been obvious for some time. Three of you will be running for your positions for Hayden City Council this November, and you need to decide whether your vision for Hayden is in line with those of the globalist smart growth 2040 planners or those of the citizens. And your refusal so far to take any meaningful measures to reduce the population densities of the future land map speaks volumes about your allegiances. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Our next commenter is Stephanie Satterfield.
Okay, I'm probably gonna be in trouble, but oh, well. So, thank you, Mayor, for cell and.
Ms. Satterfield, if you could, if you could state, go ahead.
Anyway, and council members, for the privilege to speak to you tonight. My name is Stephanie Satterfield. I live at 10052 North Bell Street within the city limits of Hayden. Let me start off by stating, I have my own thoughts, I am my own person. I don't always agree with my husband, and I do not speak for him, nor does he speak for me. We established those rules 35 years ago when I was 23, not 12. So with that said, I have a little statement I'd like to make, and this isn't so much directed at council as it is, I faithfully watch the meetings, every council meeting, and I get frustrated with the public, more so than with you guys, because I think you're all doing a great job. So with that said, I do not understand why certain people went to micromanage every item on the consent calendar and have their friends come and be disrespectful to the council to promote their personal agenda. Micromanaging is never a good practice. If you have already approved the budget, let's move on unless it is outside the scope of that said budget. It is the responsibility of our city administrator to manage his staff and their department's financials. Trust in your administrator and the staff that they have the best interest of the city in mind, which I believe they do. They are spending funds already approved in prior budget. I find the micromanaging very disrespectful to staff and the city administrator. Regarding the woman who is constantly complaining about the consent calendar and how wrong she thinks the law and consent calendar are set up, instead of the continual bitching, please run for Idaho State Legislature, Senate, or city mayor. And if you're elected, you can work on these issues. However, I won't be voting for you. So please quit wasting the council and staff's time. Most staff have been here since 8:00 AM, and we are paying some for overtime, and our bill each minute the city attorney is here. So if you are truly concerned about saving tax dollars, please stop with your unnecessary rhetoric. As a citizen, it is your right to attend city council meetings, it is a privilege to speak at them, which council can remove at any time except during a public hearing, I believe. It is not your place to interfere with your elected council to do their sworn jobs. I did not vote for all who sit on council, but I respect the body as a nonpartisan whole and will cast my vote at the next election for who I deem most qualified to serve, the citizens of my beloved city. And I'm just going to add something. Most of the traffic is not Hayden. It's the people that live in Dalton, Athol, Cordelane, coming through our city, and so I'm really tired of hearing about that. Thank you.
Ma'am? Do we have anyone else that would like to make a comment? If so, you could fill out a form at the back of the room? Just as you came in, ma'am, right up on top of the stairs. Thank you very much. And no surprise, Ms. Osterson, you're up next.
Oh, thank you.
Ms. Osterson, you may not have been here at the start, so it's.
Sorry.
That's all right. You're limited to five minutes.
All right.
And at four minutes, I will wave a sheet of paper to let you know you've got about a minute left.
Okay, thank you.
If you could please state your name and whether or not you're a resident of Hayden.
My name is Tanya Osterson. I'm a resident of Cordelane, but my sister lives in Hayden, so I'm up here very often. And I would like to talk about an incident that happened in Cordelane, but it can easily happen in Hayden. So the incident happened on April 7th. We were at a meeting at a cafe in downtown Cordelane, and the power from an antenna array, you know, a microwave radiation antenna array on top of a 10-story apartment building, was beaming down on the cafe, and we were all experiencing headaches and tingling in our body. The power was really excessive, and the average power density in micro watts per square meter goes as high as 50,000. I have a meter and I measure it, and it's so excessive, and I called the FCC about this, and they acknowledged receiving my complaint, and I'm waiting for a response. So I want to know, who is responsible for the harm this radiation is causing from these wireless telecommunications facilities? They're all over Hayden also, so it's just not Cordelane. This happens all over. And you do have a lot of control at the local level when you have an updated ordinance, so we urge you to update your ordinance. And one of the points we make, I'm a member of Wire Idaho, is that you have the power to cap, put a cap on power, what comes out of the antennas, because you only need so much, but it's really excessive. We got cell towers on Ramsey, you know, the one near Prairie, and the one further on south on Ramsey, those are really excessive, too. And I have a meter, and I've gone around and tested these. So what we're stressing is for you to update your wireless telecommunications ordinance to provide for certain things, and you do have a lot of control at the local level. Okay, that's it, I think.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Councilmember White has a question.
I have a question. Ma'am, I have a question for you. Yes. Are you talking about 5G or are these normal hours?
They said, I'm just talking about the normal cell towers right now.
Okay.
And there's an antenna arrays on top of tall buildings, and they put out a lot of it, yeah, so that's all I'm talking about right now.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much.
Can I turn this in for a public record?
I'm sorry, ma'am?
Or can I put this on the public record?
If you could give it to our city clerk, if you'd like.
I would like to do that.
Sure.
Where is she?
She is, this lady in the center.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Mm-hmm.
Thank you very much for your comment. Our next commenter is Ms. Castle. Unless I mispronounced that.
Oh, no, there.
Okay.
Hi.
It's on?
Yeah. My name is Ingrid Castle, and I moved here in March 2020, believe it or not. And I was initially wanting to spend some time, you know, just checking out the ordinance that they have, because I was kind of appalled that there were so many cell towers that were so low. And I don't know if you realize this, but anything below 200 feet does not have to be regulated by the FCC. And there's a huge increase in cancer incidence in people that live near these lower, you know, cell towers. I mean, you can't even sell a trailer in that park across, you know, that's behind the movie theater and, you know, in front of the post office. That tower there is just blasting all those people, and there's no one in that park that hasn't been affected by cancer. And then, you know, I don't know, if it's rumored that there is a lawsuit over that apartment complex built around one that looks like a tree at Prairie and Ramsey, but yeah, that should never be allowed to have a cell tower like that in a residential area, because that's where people spend most of their time. You don't get the sleep you need, you know, when you, at nighttime, that eight hours of sleep or seven hours for some people, if you're bombarded constantly by wireless, you know, microwave radiation, your body does not go into repair mode. And right now, we are seeing a cancer epidemic primarily from that, and I see it all the time, because I work with alternatives to cancer treatment, and I see it all the time. And I educate people about that very issue. So I, you know, I'm concerned, because Dalton Gardens, they did pass a really good ordinance. It took two years of fighting, and they have a 56-page solid ordinance, but then it's the enforcement, and it talks about, you know, having those caps on the power output, that's the most important thing, and that you don't have stuff in the residential neighborhood. And we're not just talking 5G, 4G also. So I did a search with someone in Dalton Gardens, antenna search. So you can do antennacall.com, and you can see all the applications in the future as well as the existing ones. And it's just shocking, you know, just, you know, between the towers and the antennas putting out, you know, radio frequencies and microwave radiation. I mean, it was so bad for me here, I was starting to get sick, because I'm electrically sensitive, and I was getting sick in my own place. I finally hired someone to shield my place so I could actually sleep at night without taking some, you know, herbal concoction or hemp paste or, you know. I mean, who wants to be addicted to something just to get that deep REM sleep? But yeah, I was, you know, I felt my immune system was going down, and being in the alternative health field and, you know, selling products that help people recover, you know, I'm very, very aware of what this is doing. So you guys are aware, I mean, I didn't, wasn't, you know, I thought you were down the list, and I was going to take better notes, and so I printed out some stuff, but, you know, I feel like during the week, I'd like to be able to talk to you guys and work on, you know, an ordinance, because what's going on in Cootinay County, you may not be aware, but they have a three-page ordinance, and now AT&amp;T is walking all over them and suing them for not passing the site of a proposed cell tower at Potlatch Hill, which was not granted for other reasons, you know. They were saying that it lacked coverage. They, all their arguments were shot down, but the people at Potlatch Hill had to actually hire an attorney. And now, you know, we're keeping an eye on that, but we approached the county for years, and it gets down to the wire that, oh, we're being sued now because we neglected to get a solid ordinance in place that protects the citizens and the residents of Hayden or Cootinay County. So anyway, just if there's someone, you know, that I can work with that's interested, I mean, I know you're not supposed to do a lot of response to the people talking, but if I could just get a hand raised, I would love to work with a council member or the mayor on developing, you know, education and developing such an ordinance, because we have a model ordinance in Dalton Gardens, and people all over the country recognize it as the most solid ordinance ever, and it just happened in Dalton Gardens.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
If I may, and I don't know if it would be something with the city administrator or anybody on staff that would know offhand, does the city of Hayden have a wireless ordinance at this time? We do. Okay.
Obviously not adequate. That's.
If I could, please, I think maybe it would be in the best interest of all parties to maybe look at it, review it, whoever with staff is involved with that, and see exactly where it is, how it does compare, and kind of just take a look to see where we actually stand on the issue.
Right.
Ms. Castle, if you would like to call the front desk at City Hall, any one of us are available to talk to you, and I also would be happy to discuss it with you.
Right, because I think the big misnomer that these attorneys with the AT&amp;T and Verizon stuff, they'll say, well, your hands are tied because of the FCC. What they don't realize is that there's court cases from 2019 and 2021. Finally, the lawsuit, you know, that judge, it was in federal court. Oh, yeah. But they granted them, you know, that they had to update it from 1996, but they're in bed with the telecommunications FCC, you know, it's just like, you know, what we're seeing about the CDC and the FDA, they're all in bed with Big Pharma. Well, the same thing is with the FCC, even though a federal court has, you know, demanded that they update to consider health and biological effects. I mean, they had 11,000 pages of evidence, and the judge said, oh, yeah, we have it, you know, you've got to update it, and they never did. So this is what the telecom industry is using, an outdated thing, we already have a court case to compel them. So it's a huge growing issue as people become more sick, basically, because it builds up in their system. But that's it. I mean, I'm not going to be laboring, I would like to work with some people.
Thank you for your comment, Ms. Castle. Do we have any other folks who would like to comment tonight? Okay. Not seeing anybody breaking for the back for a form here. We'll move on to our next order of business here. We have a commission report from the Arts Commission, and I believe Ms. Lynn Frisahn is going to present that, who is chairman of the Hayden Arts Commission.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor. My name is, as you said, Allyn.
And I believe Ms. Lynn Frazon is going to present that, who is chairman of the Hayden Arts Commission.
Good evening, Mayor. My name is, as you said, Lynn Frazon. I am the chair of the Hayden Arts Commission. And I would like to thank you, Mayor Frassell, and the city council for the opportunity to speak to you this evening and update you on the progress we've been making. We are, as a group, seven commissioners, myself, Karen Campbell, Rhonda Mitchell, Matthew Edwards, Devalu Cummings, Stephanie Satterfield, and the world-renowned artist Terry Lee is a newest addition and we are very pleased to have him. We meet the first Wednesday of each month at 3:00 PM and invite you, all of each one of you, as well as the public to attend. The commission is presently working on establishing a series of public art benches strategically placed in the city's central business district. The project is called Come Together. And we seek to install artistically designed Hayden-centric benches while providing eye-pleasing and practical spaces for all. The Hayden City Gallery is also, this April through June, is showing the photography of cowboy Mike Beaver. I invite everyone to look on your way out, the gallery is a wonderful display and gallery. So the other thing is we are looking right now to sponsor the summer youth theater program. We have two companies we are presently looking into working with. One is the Missoula Children's Theater and the other is the Christian Youth Theater here in Hayden. Future projects we are hoping to accomplish, one is the continuation of the Come Together bench program. Another is a wrapping around the utility box by Walmart. And then there is interest in putting a mural or an art installment for the concrete wall near Fourth and Prairie. There's just a really unappealing concrete structure there if we want to fix. Another possibility, we're looking at a possible annual fundraiser called Family Fun Art in the Park. And finally, we're looking at the possibility of placing art installments in future roundabouts. So I thank you for your time this evening. And if you have any questions or comments for me, I'm happy to take those.
Councilmembers? Councilmember White?
I just have one comment. You mentioned Christian Youth Theater. My children were participating in Christian Youth Theater when we lived in San Diego years ago. They loved it. It was really great. Good, clean fun and they learned a lot, so.
It's a great program. It's a national, I believe it's a national program and I think it's a franchise or something along that line. And, yeah, we've been impressed, so. But we're still in the works of deciding between the two. They both, Missoula Children's Theater and the local Christian Youth Theater company, both are presenting, you know, their proposals and we're, as a council, deciding on them and we will vote based on those proposals. Thank you.
I have a question for you, Ms. Frazon. The bench program that you guys are working on.
Yes.
How are you doing on getting sponsorships or artists to present ideas to you? How's that coming along?
At present, we have four different proposals from four different artists. Most of them are local. I think one is in Sandpoint. They are a myriad of designs and also materials. So we are, you know, we're actually working on a workshop. I believe this next meeting is May 3rd. We're doing a workshop and I would urge any of you to come and enjoy, you know, and help us in that or just participate, so. Okay?
Thank you.
Great.
Other questions? All right. Thank you very much for giving us the update tonight. We appreciate that.
Thank you.
Our next item of business is an action item. It is the adoption of the Ramsey Road Dakota to Wyoming roadway alignment. And our Public Works Director, Mr. Alan Satterfield, is here to tell us about that.
Satterfield?
I'm sorry, not Satterfield, pardon me, Mr. Satterling.
That would be my name.
Ah, okay.
Brothers by a different mother.
My mistake, Alan, sorry about that.
No, I got lumped in with somebody. Sorry about that, Roger.
No, I just said I adopted you, Alan, so.
That's good.
All's good.
Yeah, we are, this is the Ramsey Road Wyoming-Dakota corridor plan that we've been working on. And this is basically an overview of it. It starts on your left over here at Ramsey Road, I mean Dakota, down Ramsey Road and it starts down at the red end down on the right, that's where Wyoming is. The current road is fairly straight, the section line is fairly straight, but you'll see that's not a perfectly straight road. And so what that's about is we are, we're looking at here in the near future, probably, I'm going to say two to three years, of putting gravity sewer down this corridor. When we do that, we want to put the sewer in the right location for a roadway that'll actually fit through this corridor. So what we did was we looked at what would the city's planned road look like going through here and how could we do that with the least impacts to existing property owners and to adjacent property owners. And so we laid out a corridor that we've talked in the past with the council. And the intent of that is to provide a future alignment. This is not a project that's going to get built today or tomorrow, but it's layout of future alignment so that as we build utilities down this corridor, improvements and other things, we actually get them in a location that will be able to get through there with the least impacts to the adjacent properties. So this is kind of an overview. I have a slide in each one. This is Dakota on your right, this is the first section. It's just a typical section, runs right down the section line, there's really no restrictions here, this is an open area. This is going to be a property that redevelops. This is where the city's new H6 lift station will be built right here. So there's really no conflicts here, so it's pretty straight. This is by Olympus. This is Moonridge Lift Station. And again, we're just running right down the section line like, because this was already planned out. You can see that this falls right on the right away, this existing sidewalk, just like it should. Look on this sidewalk there, so it was, this was laid out. As you go down, we have pretty much the same. Here's the existing right away right along this sidewalk. But we get here two miles, we're going to have a slight shift right here. And it shifts over to the west, so the west is at the top of the page. This is the, this is the airport property, this is real close to where the skeet or trap shooting is. I'm not sure if it's skeet or trap, but it's one of those two. And of course, that's undeveloped, it's basically undeveloped property. So the road got shifted that direction a little bit so that it's not impacting the existing properties on the east. Again, same through this. And then we get to, you can see another little shift here, this is at Lacy. And we, at this point, you can see some major changes. Here we have a sidewalk, swale road, swale sidewalk. Here, you're seeing that the sidewalk is squeezed up next to the curb, here squeezed up next to the curb because in this next slide, you're going to see there's homes already built here. And this is the existing right away. So what we did was we pretty much squeezed this in between the existing right away on this side, moving a little bit towards this side. And we shrunk the road as much as we could to minimize that and we shifted the alignment. And then here, we shift back down. And this is all to avoid major impacts to these properties. And then this is the, down here is the, I think the Eagles Future RV Site. So that's basically undeveloped, they're aware of this, we've had discussions with them. Up to the north is the County Improvements. This is a utility site. And then we'll tie into what will be the future, this is the alignment for the future Ramsey Road extension north that will be built next summer. So when, this will come completely after this, this will be done before this happens. So again, the intent was to provide a corridor that we can now start working towards and any improvements or anything that we put in the ground goes in a logical location to support this alignment, to minimize those impacts to those properties. And is this, is this be adopted or approved? Does it matter?
Approved.
Approved. And so I'm just kind of basically asking the council for approval of this alignment so that any future improvements, developments, or anything that come along here, then this will be how they improve their portion of this. Okay. Any questions?
Council, questions? Councilmember De Priest?
Well, not really, but I mean, when you say next summer, we talking summer of '24 or summer of '23, which is just coming?
Summer '24 for the road construction north of this. This is not going to be constructed. This is to get in and to plan so that when things do, for example, I'm going to go back here, with this property, if this gets developed, right, now they're going to have to, their furniture improvements will include this curb in this location. And it also has an elevation for it. So it's all laid out on what would be required. And if you continue north and, oh, here, we'll go here, this is the airport property. If the airport were to do something with that, then we have alignment that we're saying this is what you have to build to so that, and then we're going to, if we put utilities in here, because there's water's going to go in here, sewer's going to go here, the utility poles are going to shift. So all that stuff is based on this alignment. So it's really just a way of figuring out how does everything go together and get through here without major impacts to the adjacent property owners.
All right. Thank you. Council President Roder.
Thank you, Mayor. I understand that there's a proposed sewer line that will be built along, in the right way.
In this right way, yes.
And so my question is, is the sewer line going to be put in soon and then the road will then be actually redeveloped the way that the plan is several years down the road? I guess the timing on the sewer line, that's my question. When will that happen, Alan?
Next, I would say two to three years, two to five years. I don't, I don't actually know, Matt.
For the sewer line?
Yeah. It's not funded at this moment.
Okay. I just wanted to, yeah, because I know it's part of the...
And so when this gets approved, if this gets approved, then we will design the sewer that goes in this road that needs to get done to fit this alignment. So that's all part of it. There's water that, by one of our, the water purveyor that overlays this area, they'll be designing their water line to fit this alignment. The utility companies, Avista Gas, anything that they have to relocate will be designed to fit this alignment. So what we're doing is setting the stage for where these things go so that when they go in, we can put this road back in a logical location.
Thank you. Other questions from council members? Can you tell me, there is some portion of this that's going to be constructed this summer? Is that not true?
That is not true. That I'm, that I'm, well, I will be building, there is hopes from here north that we'll be putting sewer in this summer.
Okay, that's what...
But it's not in this section.
It's not in that particular section.
I think that's what, I think that's what you're referring to, Mayor.
That may make a little more sense to you now, too. Okay, good.
And Alan, for clarification, if something comes up during the next phase of design where a major modification is needed, you would bring this realignment back to council, correct?
Yes, because it would be, it would be approved, right? We would want, we would make those changes in...
I just wanted to make sure that they understand that it would come back if anything comes up. This is sort of the first domino.
Okay, thank you. Other questions or comments from council members?
I do.
Councilmember White?
It just looks to me like you've been really careful to look at where the homes are and to minimize impact on homes and I appreciate that.
Thank you, that's what's part of the intent.
Yeah, thank you.
Or a big part of the intent, so.
Thank you.
Councilmember Satterfield?
This project's been going on since 2010, or a long time.
Yeah, I don't know.
A long time. And if anybody goes out on Lancaster Road and seen the increase in traffic, not from our city, but from other cities, other development, this is a corridor that's going to need to be built so that it keeps some of that pressure off of residential and other streets in the city. You know, and some things I've learned over the years, by not having this completely straight, you're actually kind of building in, maybe intentionally or not intentionally, traffic, what do they call them?
Calming.
Yeah, traffic calming because when you have a straight line, people tend to go fast. So, you know, that worked out really good. You know, the minimization of affecting property owners is, you know, kudos to Alan and the people who have been designing this. And I think one of the biggest things that I've heard over the years is commercial development wants to know width, elevations, they want to know all this stuff because if they don't know that, it's hard for them to come in and build something in our city when they don't have that information. And if we let them build it, then we have to adapt the road to them. So, you know, just, you guys have done a great job on this, thank you.
Councilmember De Priest?
Yeah, I think if all of the questions, I'd like to make a motion to approve the adoption of Ramsey Road Dakota Avenue to Wyoming Avenue roadway alignment.
I'll second that. We have a motion and a second. Is there further discussion from, or questions from council members? Hearing none. Roll call vote please, Abby.
Councilmember Satterfield?
Yes.
Councilmember White?
Yes.
Council President Roder?
Yes.
And Councilmember De Priest?
Yes.
Motion passes. We are down to our reports section of the meeting tonight. I would like to start off the, no, we'll, let's see, we have reports and roundtable. I would like to mention that I recently received a very complimentary letter from a citizen regarding Deputy Tanner Cox. He handled the situation very professionally. The citizen was so moved that she actually wrote a letter to our city complimenting Deputy Cox on the way he handled it. So congratulations and thank you very much. We have other reports or roundtable items? Councilmember White?
Yeah. I would just like to thank everybody for coming tonight and I really am a firm believer in public participation being key to any local government. I'm grateful for each of you who came and spoke tonight. And you bring our attention to things that you see because you're our eyes and ears outside of our realm. So I appreciate hearing from you. And I just wanted to let you know I'm here to serve you and work for the good of the city. Thank you.
I have several things from Mr. Brett Boyer who cannot be here tonight. First of all, we are having a specialized needs recreation open house on May 18th.
They are not us.
I'm sorry?
They are not us.
Yeah, that's true. That's right, specialized, thank you very much.
What is it?
The specialized needs recreation folks are having an open house on May 18th. Our public involvement survey is complete, the newsletter is being finalized. We will be sending out the newsletter next week and the survey will be included in the newsletter with several ways that our citizens can sign on and take the survey. In response to some concerns from some council members, we will also have a paper survey available for those that would like to do it. When folks come to the, if they would like to come to the city and get one, we will, if they prefer not to use the computer, which we will have available for them, we will give them the paper survey and let them figure that out. Those are the things from Mr. Boyer. Do we have any other items from council? I invite us all to look at the clock.
And cheer.
And hearing none, I have a motion for adjournment. And hearing none, I have a motion for adjournment. Some of, we stand adjourned, thank you for coming tonight, ladies and gentlemen, we appreciate it.[1783.32]